No problem. Got it. Got it. Get it. Got it. Clicked on. Got it.
All right, we should be good.
We're good. All right. Good evening. This is a reg regular board me meeting of the odd odd along to L elementary school dis district. It's Tuesday, Jan. January 25, 2022. I hope everyone is have having a good eve evening and let's try to get this party started. Sorry, I just go off because I get nerve nervous. Okay, so we are convening the open session. Can we 1.03 can oh call to order? The time is five thirty thirty three. And 1.03 roll roll call and quorum is stab establishment.
Trustee Eckes. Trustee La French.
La French present.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner present.
Trustee Benz.
And Ben's press present. Okay, the form is established 1.004. Can we please do the pledge? Please stand and place your right hand over your heart. And red ready be begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the public, for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all. All right, awesome. Thank you. Okay, so we're at two adopt adoption of the agenda 2.001 proposed additions, deletions, and adjustments in the order of biz business 2.002. Yes, ma'am.
Madam President, we do not have any adjustments.
Sorry, I was just gonna read on through. Thank you. Okay, 2.02 adoption of the agenda. Can can I get a motion, please?
It is my motion.
Okay, can I get a sec second, please?
La French, I second.
Thank you. Can I get a vote?
Trustee Eckes.
Aye.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz.
Ben's aye. Okay, now on to three close session deck duckery rotations. We will be take taking items 3.002 and 3.005 into close session. Okay, and let me go on to four pub public test testimony be be for close session. And 4.01. First, we need the thing read.
Yes, I'll do that, Madam President. Give me one second. Good. 4.01. The public comment period is administered by state law and is the point in the meeting set aside for members of the public to share their opinions with the board. Open meetings laws do not permit the board to engage in dialogue or answer questions. The health, well being, and public safety of community members, public officials, and employees is a top priority for the Adelanto Elementary School District, consistent with the shelter in place orders from the governor and December Dino County. More members and staff may participate in this meeting via Zoom. This meeting is in compliance with the governor's executive order AB 361, which will provide local legislative bodies with the continued flexibility to meet remotely without adhering to all the Brown Act teleconferencing rules during a proclaimed state of emergency, but with the following key limitations. Number one, public comment must be allowed in real time. And number two, if there are technological issues, the meeting must be stopped, and no vote or other official action can be taken into the public can once again participate in the proceedings. Protocols for speakers, any person who wishes to address the governing board on close session of items only must complete and complete and submit an A E S D speaker request four or five minutes before the meeting is called to order. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comment, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate the input from the public. Additionally, a public speaker can be cut off for exceeding a lot of time or for willfully causing an actual disruption to the meeting. Before cutting a person off or removing someone, the board will give at least one clear warning. If you were cut off or one last time, please consider that your warning. Individual speakers are allowed three minutes to address the board on each close session of dinner or open a session in line. The board limits the total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation, depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. The president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue, and may ask that additional person speak, always they have something new to add. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank. Thank you. Do we have anyone for close session?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Do we have a rep represent representative from ADTA?
No, not not for a close session.
Okay, and and CCA as well. Okay, thank. Thank you. Okay, so we will go to close session. Can can I get a mo motion, please?
It is my motion.
And can I get a second?
Trustee Turner, a second.
Thank you. And can I get a vote, please?
Trustee Eckes.
Aye.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz.
And Ben's, aye. The most motion passes for oh, and I forgot to say say that the last time we vote voted. Sorry. The time is now five thirty nine. Okay, we'll see see you in close session. Okay, thank you. Okay, sorry. Sorry for for the long wait. Let's go on to six re recon convene open session 6.01. Oh, and the time is eight fifty two. Call to order word order roll say 6.02 roll call and quorum is stab establishment.
Trustee Eckes.
Here.
Trustee La French.
La French present.
Trustee Turner. Trustee Turner. I think you're paused muted.
Trustee Turner present.
Thank you. And trust events.
Ben's pre present. Okay, um, seven seven close session report. We do have a report portable action. I will read it aloud. Please have patience with me. I don't do great on the read read aloud. So here we go. In close session that the board took action to re-release the fall following administrative employees from the indicated positions and reassign them to teaching or other certificate cated positions pursuant to ed education code set section 44951 effective at the end of the 2021 2022 school year and directed the superintendent or does designate to send out appropriate league legal note notices with employee number 6292 current position principal and for the 2022 23 position to teach teacher, the board voted three one in favor of the reassignment. Did I do okay on that? That one?
You have to call out. No, you have to call out the vote.
Oh, the the vote. Okay, so it was, um, okay, trustee trustee Eckes, I trustee La La French, I trustee Benz, I trustee turn Turner name. Okay, and for employee number 6221 with the current position principal to the 2022 23 position of teacher, the board voted four oh Eckes, I trustee La French, I'm sorry, trustee Eckes, I just wrote the last name. Trustee Turner, I trustee Benz, I and that passed four oh.
Madam President, did any of these have a motion in a second?
Yes, I'm sorry. Sorry for um, employee employee 6292 Ben's motion and La La French sec second. And for employee employee 6221 La French motion and turn Turner set second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Let's go on to eight pub public test testimony. We want to do a ADTA. And eight eight point oh oh two. Do we have a ref representative? Do you have to reread the thing again? I'm sorry.
No, I read it at the beginning. So we're good to go. Thank you. We do. We do not have a public speaker for ADTA or CCA tonight.
Okay.
We have some people from the public.
Okay.
Great. So the board invites Connie Canavan. You may unmute yourself and welcome. Thank you. Connie, there you go. There you go.
My unmuted. Okay, good evening. I'd like to. I'd like to address how many positive antigen results have kept our staff off work, even though they've had no symptoms until the PCR test came back five days later, and they turned out to be negative, meaning the original result was incorrect, and our staff has been off work unnecessarily during a time when subs are desperately needed and in short supply. As if that fact is not bad enough, our staff is forced to use our own personal sick days because of the inaccurate tests and quarantining because someone else is sick. Just contact with one or two positive employees. It doesn't matter if we are sick or not, can use up all of our sick time for the entire year. What happens if we do get sick COVID related or not? And all of our sick time has been wasted on other employees being sick. How do we pay our bills? The fact is, you don't care how we pay our bills, eat or live for that matter. Our district got plenty of COVID money, and to my knowledge, none of it went towards staff quarantining while waiting for test results. I have no issue using my personal time when I am sick. My issue is using my sick time because someone else is sick, or I had an inaccurate test result, which has happened two times in my own family in this district. Teachers are expected to class split or period sub during their prep period, causing them to lose their own prep time, not to mention making additional lesson plans while quarantining using their personal sick time, yet still working to maintain and manage their class while they're out. I have five family members that work in education in three different districts in California, and we are the only district that expects the employees to use their personal sick time for COVID related absences. The last two districts, as soon as the COVID lead was up, those other two districts stepped up and told their employees, you don't have to worry about your paycheck and feeding your family. Ours did not. By not providing supplemental COVID leave, you're putting staff in the difficult position to show up for work when they actually are sick because they ran out of their sick time quarantining for other people, only to find out five days later, they were never positive to begin with. To add insult to injury, our pay increases have not kept pace with our out of pocket health insurance premiums, causing staff paychecks to decrease yearly as inflation rises daily, makes it quite clear to staff and students that none of us are your priority. With the amount of positive COVID results during this time period, now more than ever, it's important that our district steps up and provides supplemental COVID leave to ensure our teachers and staff can continue to support our students. I know that I heard Governor Newsom put something in um, is doing something, I'm not sure what, to bring back the COVID leave, and it really makes me sad that you're going to be forced to give us the COVID leave instead of doing it from your hearts. I've been with this district in one capacity or another since 1994. That's like 28 years. And I'll tell you, the last few years, I have never felt so. I don't even know what the word is. Unappreciated, but I don't care if you appreciate me because I'm not here for you. I'm here for the students. But morale is really low. Because it just feels like you just don't care.
Fifteen seconds.
I'm done.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
The board invites Esmeralda Lopez. Welcome, Ms. Lopez.
Good afternoon. I already said good night. Incredible nine o'clock. I want to speak today on a lot of things, specifically on some things that I saw from January 18, 2022, a week ago. I decided to speak specifically about this. I want to start by letting you know how I feel in the most respectful way, because it's the person that I am. I find it cruel and fair and frankly, poor work ethic that once again, we're having a Zoom meeting when our superintendent, and I have pictures of him, is maskless, taking pictures with other people that I have pictures with, no physical distancing. I don't think that's fair. I think as parents, we deserve a board meeting in person. Mr. Stefan Kimbello, you look very happy to with all of the things you want. I don't think that's fair. Honestly, it's not fair. It's not fair that we're here having to be in a Zoom meeting because of COVID, but you guys are out and about. How comfortable. My child's teacher asked for donations often to get water and supplies, and I donate all the time because it's for my children. But before we brag about other things, why don't we take care of that? Because my son has came to me more than one time saying he feels dehydrated because sometimes there's no water at school. I'm not the only person that said that their child is sometimes scared. It's not the teachers. It's not the school. It's your guys' responsibility. Next, superintendent, please don't feel that us as parents were giving hatelessness when all it is is we're exercising our First Amendment. I'm sorry you confuse the police with parents not allowing their child to be administered shot. That doesn't stop them from catching it, passing it, and dying it. Oh, and no liability if my child becomes injured. Also, don't feel like a referee. I did something you you haven't been able to do since I was first my child, and therefore I will not co-parent with anybody. They can decide what my child needs to put in his body or her body in order to continue getting education. That's manipulation. Next time you say you know what's best for children, make sure you're leading with example, example, because my child is required to listen. I promise to pray for you guys because I know that deep down you guys are great people, and you guys will do that you guys need to do. Just remember, the good guys have never been the ones mandating anything. Do the right thing and defend our children. That's all I have to say today.
And thank you.
All right. Thank you. The board welcomes Angela Espino. Mrs. Espino, welcome. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. Good evening, distinguished Board of Trustees, Cabinet Members, A E S D staff, and Community Members. My name is Angela Espino. I am the Library Media Coordinator at Adelanto Elementary School. I've been with our district for almost 15 years and in and the last eight in our wonderful library. Tonight, I'm speaking in support of the reclassification request we have made that is currently in negotiation. Thank you to our CCA negotiation team for your support. In 2008, the board approved a reclassification to the Library Media Specialist position when textbooks were added. The title was changed to Library Media Coordinator, but the change in range to Clerk One was never implemented. We would like to have this issue reinvest investigated and a solution provided. We are requesting to be moved to the range approved in 2008, an increase in hours from six hours to eight hours, and a new reclassification to include the new responsibilities we currently take care of. I've had to have get a second job in order to help support my family, and I actually just served trustee Eckes at the local craft store where I work most nights and weekends. Over the years, the responsibilities of librarians has increased dramatically. Most recently, we were given the responsibility of distributing and maintaining Chromebooks for our students. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't start my video.
It's okay.
We troubleshoot and fix what we can with the Chromebooks, clean them, and do work orders for the ones we can't fix. We are responsible for millions of dollars of the district's materials, all components of curriculum, textbooks, library books, and Chromebooks. We're responsible for maintaining their condition and their value so that they can be used for prolonged periods of time. We are here to support our students, staff, and community, and ensure that they have everything they need to succeed in all aspects of their education and to encourage them to be lifelong learners. We worked hard during the pandemic to make sure each and every student had everything they needed for distance learning. I encourage you to visit the library when you visit the campuses. Come see what we are doing. When you're in the classrooms, look around. The books you see our students using, those were given to them by a librarian. The teachers additions that the teachers are using to educate those students, we gave those to them too. And we collect them at the end of every school year and redistribute them at the beginning of every new school year, just to protect the district's assets. So again, I'd like to thank our negotiations team for addressing this issue. I hope it can be resolved before we lose dedicated and loyal employees. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Madam President, that concludes our public comment. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank. Thank you. Okay, on to nine pub public here hearings and sunshine proposals. 9.01 biz business serve server services can conduct combined pub public here hearings in connection to the mod modification of certain terms and parameters of commu immunity facilities did district number four of the odd odd along to elementary school district.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Kraus. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and members of the community with us this evening. This item, as well as several others, that you will encounter in the agenda farther along, have to deal with community facilities district number four. And at this time, I would like to just invite Rob Anslo with Atkinson Anderson and Jesse Landry with CFS, who has worked on these agenda items with district staff to just give a very brief synopsis of the public hearing and the reasoning for the items before the board this evening. Rob and Jesse, I believe you're still with us.
Hi, Michael. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Michael, and members of the board, members of the community. My name is Robert Anslo. I'm a partner with Atkinson Anderson. What we have tonight is the public hearing, commited public hearing regarding the proposal to make certain changes to CFD number four pursuant to resolutions numbers zero five and zero six that were adopted by the board in December. So this is the time and the place for the public hearing. So if any members of the community have comments relative to community facilities district number four, they are welcome to present them at this time.
Great. Thank you for that synopsis. And I'll turn it back over to Madam President for the public hearing.
Okay, so we'll oh, boom, open up the time for pub public com comment at nine ten. Do we have anyone who wants to speak on this?
I don't have any requests for comment. Certainly, please raise your hand, raise your hand function, if you'd like to make a public like a comment regarding this. Michael, they have the the public has the ability to raise your hand, correct?
Yes, sir. I saw a hand up early in the meeting, not related to this.
Okay, great. So public, you feel free to raise your hand, and we'll happily call on you. Not seeing you.
Madam President, this is Rob Anslo. Also to add that the landowner, D R Horton, who owns the property within CFD number four, has concurred to the proceedings and has provided the necessary waivers for the proceedings to go on later on in the agenda, and we'll discuss that later on.
Okay.
I do see a hand raised, Madam President. Mike, if you can unmute Melissa.
I have asked them on you.
Melissa.
Hello.
Yes.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. Yeah, thank you for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to check with you, Superintendent. How is it? I read an article, and I was just wondering, how is it that if you're or you've become the COVID expert, you have not, or I don't know if you have, but doesn't seem like it. Looked at the facts of the vaccine, because both vaccinated and unvaccinated get the COVID and pass it on. That has been proven just lately with this boom. And as you call it a ravaging ravaging COVID, it's been proven that it's vaccinated and unvaccinated people. So the vaccine doesn't stop the spread like, you know, the thing.
I've muted Melissa. Comments are not related to CFD.
Yeah, Madam President, the we're the public hearing is for comments regarding the proposed changes to CFD number four, the special taxes and authorization for bonded indebtedness. Comments unrelated to that, such as relating to health and safety issues relating to the district or not germane to this public hearing.
Okay, so so at this time, we're. I don't think there's anyone who's go going to speak speak about the our CFDs. So.
Yeah, in the absence of of comments, Madam President, we would recommend
Close it.
Close the public.
Okay, I'm gonna close it at nine thirty thirteen. Okay, I'm gonna clo- close it at nine thirty thirteen. Okay, so we're on to ten uh gov governing board men members reports and announce announcements. Who would li- like to vol volunteer to go go first?
I'll go first.
Okay.
Uh, President Benz, um, I will forego my comments tonight for time sake. Uh, we have a lot of business that we need to take care of, so I will forego my comments at this time.
Okay, thank, thank you. Uh, trustee Eckus.
Yeah, same here. I wasn't gonna say anything, but I still want to encourage people to call in and talk to us at our board meetings. Uh, I know I'm listening. I care. Um, I totally appreciate everybody in our district. Uh, if you ever don't feel appreciated, please reach out to me and I'll be happy to talk to you. Either in a phone call, a text message, email, anything. Uh, you are loved, you are wanted in our district, and I'm sorry if you don't feel appreciated. Uh, that really hurts and and I know what that feels like. So please, please feel encouraged that you are. Wanted and very appreciated in our district. Um, other than that, I just can't wait to see it for everybody in person. I know there's like a hundred and something people on Zoom tonight, which is awesome. Technology has a way of doing good things. But yes, you're right. We need to get back in person and I can't wait to see your faces and be able to be with you at a board meeting. And see you and hear for you uh from you myself. So thank you again. Just um be safe and um hopefully we'll see you at the next board meeting. Thank you.
Uh, tr- trustee La French.
I will keep my comments um short. I just wanted to say that um I am truly excited about the um. The lawmakers that have said that um, let me get this right. Um, I always get a little nervous. Um, I was excited to hear today um from um Dr. Mitchell regarding the supplemental sick leave. Um, I do um understand that, you know, as a former teacher and someone that currently works in education that. You know, we don't, you know, get paid for our sick time when we have to stay home with our children and our family members. And I was excited to hear today that that is something that um is going to be brought to the table for us. So that we don't have to stay at home and not get paid or use up all our sick time. So I'm looking forward to um. What um is going to come to help out for education for teachers and people that work in this field. Where we're using up all our time and not being able to be uh supplemented for it. Um, thank you all for coming and that was just the excitement that I wanted to bring. I was very excited to hear that today because I do understand. Um, not being able to afford. When you have to stay at home for free. Thank you.
Alright, thank, thank you. And and I will save my com comments because yeah, we we are late. So. Let let's go go ahead to twelve con consent sent uh agen agenda.
Eleven oh one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, I guess you're right. Thank, thank you. Okay, um, eleven point zero zero one board men minutes. Uh, approve as writ written and order filled reg regular board me meeting of Jan January where we e eleven twenty twenty two. Can I get a mo motion, please?
Eckus, my motion.
Thank you. Can I get a sec second?
A second, trustee Turner, second.
Thank you. And can I get a vote?
Trustee Eckus.
I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I mo mo motion pa passes for oh, thank. Thank the he, thank you, tr- trustee Eckus for stop stopping me. I appreciate the su- su- support. Okay, now we're gonna go on to twelve con consent agenda. We are take taking I against twelve point zero two through twelve point one three. Does and any trustee want to pull an item?
Yes, trustee Turner, I would like to pull twelve point one three.
Okay, twelve point one three. Does and anyone else want wanna pull something? Okay, so I I need a mo mo motion for all of the other. I items except twelve point third the routine that are in the consent.
Trustee Turner, I uh motion to approve other could the remaining consent agenda minus twelve point one three.
It is my second.
All right, and can I get a vo vote, please?
Yes, a trustee Eckus.
I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Just uh tr- trustee Benz, I. Uh, my motion pa passes for zero zero. Okay, so now I need a mo motion for twelve point one three.
I motion.
Okay, get a motion from Eckus. And I nee need a sec sec second.
A second.
Okay, La French, and now we're oh open for discussion discussion.
I'm sorry, trustee Turner. I did get a text from uh from uh Mr. Moran around this amendment. I'd like to have there with the board before you uh make your motion, if I could. Thank you.
Okay, great.
Mr. Moran. Is Carlos on? Okay, I'll I'll do it for him. So the adjustment that we talked about in closed session, uh. Madam President, I'd like to make an adjustment to the the uh amendment to that. So if we can make the the amendment to. Have the board extended through June fifth. So that way we'd have time on June fourteenth to bring it back to the board for consideration. Thank you.
Okay, um. I pulled this item because uh I did I did not agree with the superintendent's recommendation to disapprove the medical leave. Which began on March first. Um, again, I was gonna approve it until June thirty, but with that new information. I'll be willing to modify this. I would like to make actually make a new motion. Because the superintendent recommendation is that the board deny the following classified employees' extension of unpaid leave. And I would like to motion that we approve the unpaid leave until June fourth. So can I get a new motion or we have to let this one?
I think we have to finish out this motion and then go back to the new motion. Am I correct?
Or you could do a substitute motion?
This is a substitute.
Okay. Okay.
This is a substitute motion to um approve uh to change the superintendent recommendation. Uh, to approve uh unpaid medical leave uh beginning on March first to June fourth, twenty twenty two.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Okay, can I get a vote, please?
Trustee Eckus.
I.
Trustee La French.
A little confused. Is this the one that was supposed to be till June the thirtieth?
Yes, ma- yes, trustee La French. Uh, Mr. Moran is recommending uh that we amend it to June fifth. Um, because that will give us time on June fourteenth uh to bring it back for the board's consideration before if we wait till June thirtieth. Uh, it 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 cuts some option down while we go into the new year. So.
Okay, I got it.
Got perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
And I'm sorry to interrupt, Dr. Mitchell.
Yes.
The the approval would have to be from January fifth, twenty twenty three through June fifth.
Twenty, I I don't understand twenty twenty three.
I'm sorry. I apologize. So so from January fifth, twenty twenty two through June fourth of twenty twenty two. Cause you had mentioned uh trustee Turner had mentioned back to March first.
Okay.
Yeah, so again, it's J- January fifth through uh June fourth or fifth.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Miss.
Okay, so the vote.
I I left off with trustee La French.
Yes.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I.
And trustee Benz.
Benz, I. Mo motion passes for two zero zero.
The modified motion?
The yes, the the sub substitute mo motion. Okay, I go going on to staff re reports and presentations for fourteen point zero 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 one. Bid business ser- services presentation of the gov governors per proposed state bu- budget budget for twenty twenty two slash twenty twenty three.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I have uh I'm turning it over to Michael to give us an update on the governor's proposed uh budget for twenty two twenty three. Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
It's thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Good evening, members of the board. Again, this evening I am joined by Brianna Garcia, the Vice President of School Services of California. Mr. Matt Phillips was going to join us and he sends his regrets that he was not able to. However, we do have Brianna with us, so we're excited to have her. Go through this presentation briefly with the board and the community and let them know some of the things that Governor Newsom is proposing. Um, right now for the next year's budget. And so uh Mike Assuma, if you will move us forward to the next one and Brianna, you are with us, correct?
I'm here, Michael.
All right. Well, thank you for joining us this evening. So as we go through these slides, we're not gonna read every word on there, but just want to give you a broad level overview of what the governor's proposing. So there is a giant surplus uh in the state. It is massive. And so Governor Newsom has decided to use that massive surplus to try to do some things that. He knows that uh in education, for example, we need more money per student. And so here's the overall uh themes that he has. Uh, there's a big spending plan to tackle COVID nineteen. Um, we have a a big uh, you know, it's a problem in the state. And so uh he's wanting to put some money towards that. Um, but as we move forward, one of the things that he wants to do is also be fiscally prudent. And this governor seems to like a lot of one-time uh money infusions into education. And so, Mike, the next slide, as we move forward, we'll see that. So one of the things that you all have experienced, and I think we heard earlier in one of the speakers, public comment speakers, is inflation. And you can see here, inflation is just ramping up. It is unbelievable how high inflation is getting. And for those of you that may not be familiar with inflation or what it means. The cost of everything is going up. And so that's where we see the cost in fuel, for example, for our transportation department. We see the cost in food services for our uh child nutrition services department. We see the cost of pretty much everything, goods and services from computers to uh instructional materials and supplies. And so as those prices rise, uh the uh the uh there has to be something that that occurs in order to compensate. Uh, education for that. And so the governor's proposing additional funding to potentially help offset the rise, the steep rises you can see on the right of this slide. In inflation. And so as we move forward, we'll be monitoring this as a district because we also have to budget. Uh, fiscally, as we watch inflation uh increase the goods and services for our district. Next slide. So Brianna, if you just wanna touch on this about the uh governor's new spending for Prop ninety eight?
Yeah, it's an um Governor Newsom is definitely very different from uh Governor Brown in how he allocates and spends money for education. So what Governor Newsom has done um is moved away from the idea of subsidiarity and really is looking at putting in programs in place. Um, that are uh categorical in nature in that the governor and the legislature are determining how the funds should be used and providing those parameters for L E As. What this slide is showing you is that one way that he's doing that is providing funding under Proposition ninety eight and one-time investments. Um, instead of or for example, putting them in the local control funding formula, which provides you with a little bit more flexibility. So you can see on this slide, the very last bar at the bottom with regards to K through twelve, which is what's affecting you. About sixty percent of the monies that are being provided are ongoing, are monies and are committed dollars that you can use year after year and expect year after year. But forty percent of them are one-time in nature, meaning the governor has put some type of program or proposed a program in place. For this fiscal year, the coming budget year alone. Um, and then those monies will be reallocated to something different in the following year after that. Um, so it does limit your ability to plan moving ahead um into the future because they are one-time in nature.
Great. Thank you, Brianna. Mike, the next slide. So here's some uh information related to the reserve cap. And one of the things that you've heard us discuss at our first interim. And we will continue to discuss at second interim and adopted budget is what our reserve level is. You might recall the minimum is three percent. Uh, however, there are many districts that have a lot more than that. Mr. Phillips uh indicated to us that the average uh in Brana, you might be able to correct me on this. It's around seventeen percent. Reserve for elementary school districts. Does that sound right, Brana, on their reserves?
Correct. It's somewhere right around there.
Yes. And so when we did our first interim presentation, we had a minimum of three percent, but we wanted to add a few more uh dollars in there. And so we're hovering around averaging four point seven percent. So this uh this uh reserve bill that's out there triggering that, uh what would happen is that we would have, we would only be able to have ten percent. So the great news is that we are well under the ten percent. So even though there is a reserve cap right now, if we ever did get over ten percent and this reserve cap was triggered, we'd have to reduce our ending fund balance to. Meet that requirement. And so nothing to worry about here, but just wanted to briefly mention that. Mike, the next uh slide, please, sir.
I will note, Michael, if you don't mind, that um if you ever do find yourselves in a situation where you're above that ten percent, there are ways in order for you to. Set aside funds or do other things so that you actually don't have to spend down those dollars because we really do think it's an important and a best practice. For L E As to have reserve levels um a bit higher than what that requirement is by the state. We wouldn't want you to just to start spinning them down because this reserve cap kicks in.
Great. Thank you for that. Absolutely. And so here we see the proposed L C F F funding factors. And the uh basically school districts are funded per ADA. And uh you'll see in a later slide, there might be some uh legislation to change that, but currently we're funded on our ADA. And so you can see there K three uh four, six, seven, eight, nine, twelve. Uh, we just applied for the first three lines there. And uh there is a proposed five point three three percent COLA. So that is uh some good news if that's what is uh signed into law when the final bills are done. And then uh as you can see there, we also have additional funding for supplemental grants and the concentration grants of which the district does receive. And so. As we move forward and work on our second interim numbers, we will be using this information uh to project our multi-year projections for a second interim. Mike, the next slide. And here's the Financial Dartboard from School Services of California that not only we use, but many, many districts across the state use these planning factors because they are pretty much spot on with what. The governor is proposing and they might change again by the time the final bills are signed into law. But this just gives you a snapshot. You can see that that first line right there with the cost of living adjustment. Um, we received five point zero seven percent this year, but that five point three three you saw a minute ago. And then you can see the governor's proposing about three point six percent averaging over the next three years after that. And that's subject to change as well, but it gives us an idea. Of of what is uh being proposed as far as funding factors. And then again, you see the stirs and purrs that we've talked about in the past about how they're increasing the obligation to districts to put money into the stirs and purrs retirement system. Uh, the big note is the CalPERS that goes from twenty two to twenty seven percent overtime there. That's a huge increase. Um, and but stirs goes up from sixteen nine to nineteen, which is not as big a jump, but still it is an obligation the district has to fund. Uh, as we move forward. And so uh that's just one thing that we will continue to monitor and update the board and community on uh when we get some final planning numbers on that. Next slide, Mike. Uh, Brana, if you could just talk about the cliff brief briefly and what's uh what that means as far as the ADA cliff.
So a lot of school districts uh throughout California are declining in enrollment. Um, and what happened with the pandemic is there was already a natural decline in enrollment and the pandemic exacerbated that last year. What the governor and the legislature did was provide what they called a hold harmless. And so you were funded last year in twenty 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 one based on the same ADA that you were funded in the prior year in twenty nineteen twenty. And the same for this year because you have the ability as a school district to use the higher of the prior year ADA or current year ADA. So you've basically for the past two years been funded on ADA from two years ago from nineteen twenty. Because you're declining in enrollment, uh what would happen for next year? Because you're declining in enrollment, what would happen for next year is that you would basically experience two years' worth of drop in your decline in enrollment because you're looking, instead of what your ADA was this year, you're going back an extra year. And so we've been terming that the ADA cliff because it is such a steep drop for most LEAs from one year to the next. And so the governor is proposing and the legislature is also proposing a couple of different ideas for how to go about mitigating that in order to help school districts not experience as significant a drop in ADA from one year to the next. And so on the next slide. So this slide provides a hypothetical example of what this proposal might do. So if you look on the left-hand side of the slide, you see what the fiscal years are and what the actual ADA is for this hypothetical school district. So you can see in nineteen twenty, they had about ten thousand students. In twenty twenty, twenty-one, they got to use that same ten thousand students because of the hold harmless that was provided in the budget. In twenty-one, twenty-two, which is this year, you actually have about ninety-five hundred students. So that's a five hundred student drop. And then in twenty-two, twenty-three, you're anticipating that you're going to drop a little further to ninety-two, fifty. Under current law, where you're allowed to use the higher of the current or prior year ADA, you would be funded next year in twenty-two, twenty-three based on ninety-five hundred students, which is the prior year ADA, that's the ADA from this year. The governor's proposal is to allow not only to use the higher of the prior year or current year, but also an average ADA based on the three prior years ADA. So what that means is you'd be looking at the ADA from nineteen twenty, twenty twenty-one, and twenty-one, twenty-two, averaging those threes together to get that average ADA. So you can see on the left-hand side, under current law, you would be funded based on ninety-five hundred ADA. But under the governor's proposal, you'd actually get another three hundred and thirty-three students or ADA and actually be funded on ninety-eight, thirty-three. So it's still a decline in enrollment. It's still a decline in your funding, but it's not as steep as it would have been without this proposal. And so that's something that's definitely a benefit to school districts moving forward. And so we're hoping, and all signs are pointing to the fact that that's likely going to be approved by the governor and the legislature as part of the budget.
Great. Thank you, Brianna. Mike, the next slide. So here, one of the other things that is being proposed is universal meals for all students. And we're very excited about this because regardless of whether they're free or reduced, it doesn't matter. As long as they show up and they want to eat, this is being proposed that they would be fed. And so we're excited about that, that there's a proposal for that to fund it and to help districts be able to do that on an ongoing basis. And so no matter what your background is, you wouldn't need to fill out an application. You just show up and say, I'm hungry, I'm ready to eat. And so we're excited about that as we move forward. So I've been working with our CNS Director Julie Nichols on this information as well. So just another great proposal in there. Next slide, Mike.
If you don't mind, I just want to note, especially since you have a lot of parents out in the audience. So while you don't need to fill out the form in order to ensure that a student is able to get a meal, it still is important for our parents to fill out those forms or alternative income forms because that is part of how the district is able to calculate and substantiate its unduplicated pupil percentage. And that plays a big part in the funding for the district. Michael mentioned earlier on a couple of slides that you get supplemental and concentration grant monies for students, and that's based on that unduplicated pupil percentage. And so without parents filling out those forms, you wouldn't be able to know the number of students that would be eligible under, as one of those students, and you wouldn't be able to get that additional funding. So it is critical that even though students are getting a free meal, and I agree with Michael, that is a wonderful thing, you do still want your parents to fill out either the meal forms or the alternative income forms in order to ensure that you're able to count those students towards your unduplicated pupil percentage and get the most funding you can for your district in order to be able to provide programs and services to your students.
Absolutely. Thank you for that, Brianna, as well. Here, the slide talks about special education. There will be an increase in special education as we move forward. We always know that special education is not fully funded at the federal or state level, so we're excited to see that there will be some increases to our special education funding. Mike, next slide. We also saw the contribution rates earlier, just talking about CALPERS, and the rates would increase. Mike, the next slide. And then there's the STIRS rates for the certificated members of the district and the rates and how they will increase over time. Next slide, Mike. So then we've talked about, the governor proposed universal TK. And I can tell you that Dr. Dweisin and her team have been on this and are really excited to dig into the details of what this will look like as we move forward. And this slide just basically talks about how it will be implemented over time. And we are excited to be able to have this proposal on the table and start looking at what that would mean for our district. And so I want to shout out to Dr. Dweisin and her team for being on top of it and really embracing this as we look at the governor's proposals. Next one, Mike. And this, again, just details about the LCAP as we move forward. You might remember the LCAP is part of the Budget Adoption Plan. And so Dr. Dweisin and the Shea and their team have been working on our LCAP as well. And so we're excited to get the support from the state as we move forward on how we're doing our LCAP. Next slide. And then, as Brianna mentioned earlier, there's a different, basically categorical pots of money that the governor is really looking at. And this just summarizes some of the grants that are out there, the pre-kindergarten planning implementation grant, the ESER funds that we've talked about, expanded learning opportunities program. And so this is just a summary slide that talks about that funding as we move forward. Next slide, Mike. One of the other things they're proposing is to put some money into the school facility program. So as we move forward, we will be monitoring that to see if there's any money available for our district as we move forward because we always have needs. And we're excited to see that there potentially will be some funding available in the future for our facilities. Next slide. And with that, that is just a brief summary of the governor's budget proposal. Just to let you know, we will incorporate this into our, apologize, our March second interim presentation. And then we'll await the May revise to see what may or may not hold water with the legislature and the governor as they work on negotiating all of these things that is being proposed at this time. And with that, I want to thank Brianna for joining us and then open it up to the board because that ends our presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Do, and any trustees have questions?
No, but it was a great presentation. Thank you.
Trustee Turner?
Thank you, trustee Benz. I was at the governor's workshop last week. And I have to say that, you know, a lot of good information, a lot of money being generated out there. I did have a question, maybe Brianna, you can answer this. The grade span adjustment, K through third grade, they're given a ten point four percent. And nine through twelve, the two point six percent, what happened to the grades in the middle? Like four to six? Four to eight, actually. What type of percentage are they going to give? Is the governor planning to adjust those grades?
So right now, those grade span adjustments just apply to those two grade spans. For the K through three, that grade span adjustment was put in place to help with lowering class sizes. And so, for example, districts are required to have an average of twenty-four to one in those classes and those grades. And I?
And what about nine to twelve? Even though we're a K eight district, I'm just interested in why did they get a percentage of two point six percent?
I think she's frozen.
I think she's frozen.
Michael, can you address those questions?
Yes, and so at the high school level, because there, there are more needs at the high school level to prepare students for college and to also, when you look at the staffing levels and for high school districts and the, the needs of the instructional materials, it's more expensive. And so they want to take that into account because there's a lot more programs, college prep programs, enrichment programs, and other programs that cost a little more money when you get to the high school level. And so they want to just recognize that. And, and high schools usually get a little more increase every year, have been at least for the last several years under the funding formula.
Okay. Another question, Michael, at the, at the workshop, they talked about, am I getting this right? The trailer bill. I didn't hear anyone talking about that bill. A lot of things were put into this proposed budget, but we would not know until after our second interim, right?
That is correct. So at the School Services Conference, we heard a lot about trailer bills. And what a trailer bill is, is a more detailed proposal on a lot of these high-level topics that have been proposed. And so we're hearing that at the end of February, potentially, those trailer bills will come out. But we present our second interim at the first board meeting in March, which would be too late to make any adjustments. So whatever happens with trailer bills, we would then incorporate those into our proposed adopted budget in June. We'd still monitor them and, and make sure that we're monitoring what's going on and what's being proposed. But unfortunately, because of the timing, you are correct, trustee Turner, they are not going to be able to be in the second interim at this time.
And my last question is the five point three cost of living adjustment. Now, does a cost of living adjustment, I want you to explain that because, you know, over the years, we've been hearing about when a COLA is given, that it goes to salary. Could you explain what that five point three, three percent entails?
Yes, absolutely. So the cost of living adjustment, if you recall the slide we showed earlier that showed the inflation rate going up dramatically in this, this year and next year and projected to keep rising, the cost of goods and services increase across the board. So the COLA not only covers our step-in column and our range in step for our employees, but also the increase in health and welfare benefits. It goes to increase the utilities cost. It goes to increase the overall operating cost of the district, which continually rise on a daily basis. And so we are thankful for a five point three percent cost of living adjustment. But again, it goes to much more than just the salary and benefits increases that we, we have seen and continue to see, especially with healthcare as it continues to rise. And so it is much more than just for salaries and benefits for every district, not just our district. And so we hope that in the future, we'll continue to receive at least five percent because that will help offset our increases. But it won't completely cover, it never has completely covered a district's increased costs.
My last question, my last comment is, one of our teachers, Tanya Caravan, mentioned on basic leave. And I know that the governor is preparing to adjust that. Could you explain why we could not provide COVID sick leave? I know the governor is looking at bringing that back, but could you talk about that?
I can talk about the funding piece, and then I'll punt it back over to Dr. Mitchell. But the funding piece is that right now, we currently don't have authorization to use the COVID funds to offset that at this time. It potentially would have to come out of the general fund unless we, unless the law changes or the legislature gives direction to be able to use those funds for that purpose as far as the funding. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Mitchell to talk about the lever, maybe Mr. Rand themselves about that.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. I appreciate it. And I want, I want our staff to know, we, we agree with you about the concern of burning through your personal sick time. We know that you also have to use sick time for your children, your elderly parents, your family. I get it. We are just not able to use restricted dollars to support that effort. We have been lobbying the state along with the, you know, the county superintendents. We all have been lobbying the state to make this happen. It looks like it's happening soon. When we get that, when we get that legislation approved, our team will go to work and seeing what we can backdate and where we can retro, and we'll, we'll make this, we'll make this work for our staff. And so we, we hear you, we understand where you're coming from, and we agree. And I just, our hands have been tied until the governor has, has made this option happen. So we're hopeful that this will happen quickly. But as soon as it does, we will rectify as much as we can. We will implement to the fullest extent of the law. So thank you for the question, Mr. Kraus.
Yes, and I, and I have to say that I have been on, gone on the governor's work website and voicing my concern about that as well, your sick leave and sick pay. And, you know, if you can also do that, go on the governor's website and let them know your concerns. You know, you're absolutely right, you're being taken off work and you're not sick. But because of the protocol, you have to use your sick leave, and that's not fair. So I just want you to know that we are here, we hear you, and we've been hearing you, and I've done it many times. So you go on as well, let the governor know how you're feeling so he can ramp up that and also give you retroactive pay so we can replenish your sick pay. Because this is beyond your control. And your sick leave should be for your sickness and your child sickness and not for COVID, something that we can't control. So yes, I just wanted to put that out there. So that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you. Trustee La La French?
I don't have any comments.
Okay, thank you. And I have none because trustee Turner always asks such great questions. I don't know what, what to add, so I'm, I'm good here. Okay, so let's go, go on to fourteen point zero, zero, two COVID nineteen, nineteen update.
Thank you, trustee Benz. We wanted staff to provide a brief overview of kind of where we are, where this is, where our region is with this current COVID surge. We also wanted to talk a little bit about our efforts to mitigate the COVID environment through the Hill three sixty testing environment as well as the, as well as our contact tracing tool. Point of staff, thank you.
Thank you very much, trustees, communities, and staff members. This is an update to the presentation that we gave last week. And, Michael, can you switch the slide? Thank you. So just so you know, the current state of COVID in San Bernardino County, we'll do a small report on that one. There was no information to update. Also, there was changes in the school guidance. I mentioned it in the last board meeting. Well, the very next day, California adopted some new K through twelve school guidance for quarantine and isolation. And so we wanted to share that information to you. And also, we'll talk about the contact tracing status and as, as well as the staffing of the contact tracing and the at-home test kits. So the next slide, please. So in regards to this particular area, we did talk about the surge that happened in this region. Typically, on Tuesdays at noon, San Bernardino County Public Health will provide to us, to everybody on their website, a dashboard. And so unfortunately, they were not able to give us most, the most current numbers. But during this particular timeframe, just so you know, they have shared that they believe it's tabling out, meaning that it's peaked and that it's not accelerating at a higher rate. And so hopefully tomorrow, I will look up those particular numbers and I can share those with you as well. So you kind of see where we're going with Adelanto, Victorville, and our particular region. Again, all of them were records in the last report, and so I just wanted to reiterate that. Next slide. You can go through these, these next three slides are the same as last week. There was no update, so we can go through those next three slides. Thank you. The big news is that the CDC had talked about modified quarantine for students in particular. And so the California K through twelve school guidance did update that. And as I said before, the, the goal of the state, as well as the CDC, is to keep students in school. And so this modified quarantine will allow for us to keep students in school if they were wearing a proper mask, fitted properly, even though they were near somebody who may have been COVID positive. Even students who are not vaccinated, you know, so some of our middle school students, if they were wearing a mask, can have a modified quarantine and still remain in school. Some things that they ask for are testing, you know, that that student can test after five days and they're still negative and asymptomatic, then they can still stay in school. So the policies and guidelines have changed drastically. The other thing, too, is because there was such a massive surge with the Omicron virus, the CDC came out with this group tracing approach to students. And so what they're saying is, instead of contacting every single close contact in the classroom, you just tell everyone in that classroom, you were a close contact. And as long as you are, whether you're vaccinated or not, you're wearing a mask appropriately, we're going to allow you to stay in school. We still want you to test, but we'd rather have you in school. And so it cuts down on the amount of administrative work that's required when you do individual uh it cuts down on the amount of administrative work that's required when you do individual contact tracing. Um it's brand new. There's still things we have to learn about it. Uh but uh we are definitely assessing it and uh and looking at utilizing it. And that's part of the discussions that we've had since this come out, since this came out on January twelfth. Uh next slide. I think this would be uh Mr. Cross.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Quintero. As you can see, we um uh thank you for the update on the on the guidance that keeps changing. And that's one of the things that we have been monitoring because we want to change as the guidance changes. So you may recall that uh we are currently doing contact tracing internally. And so we have a command center again set up at the professional development center. I want to thank all of our staff that have been participating in the contact tracing since we have uh taken over the process. I think they've done a stellar job and it's just amazing to me uh their dedication to the district and to the contact tracing itself because we know they care and and uh it really shows. And so uh our internal staff have been doing a stellar job on that. While we keep uh training them, continue to train them on uh and and new staff that are volunteering to be contact tracers. So we're working on that. We also are uh ensuring the communication is sent out in a timely manner to staff and families. And then we also have a COVID hotline and email that are set up uh for staff and families to contact twenty four seven. So no matter what time they find out that they're positive or they think they might have symptoms, they're able to call the hotline, leave a message and also uh write an email. And that's the ways that we're able to then monitor who we need to contact back up to and and facilitate the next steps for them. Next slide, Mike. And so with this one, I'm going to send it over to Mr. Moran.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Cross. So on this one, on this slide, uh just I would like to show that staff has been identified and I believe we showed that at our last board meeting that a lot of the staff that have been identified and have uh moved forward. Again, as Michael shared, we appreciate their work with that because it is an extra load on on their their current job and this 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 new uh phase of additional work. So they've received uh several opportunities for training uh through our director of risk management, who's done a great job with uh the COVID contact tracing guide that she's been able to put together. Uh COVID liaison program communication protocol uh that she's reviewed with the team. And so you can see here on the slide how to handle contact tracing, how to, you know, answer the phone calls, emails, tracking information. You know, there's several different letters that um have to be sent out depending if you're a close contact or or you're a a positive case, or even if you're a non-close contact. Um addressing different questions. So uh they continue to 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 ask questions of of Josie, our director of risk management, and work together. I know this week, I believe on Friday, there's going to be a round table just to get the groups together to see if there's any other things that uh we need to focus on. And so uh as as the slide shares here, there was approximately forty eight employees who've been trained. I'm going to guess there's probably some more than that. Uh and then as Michael shared, the district command center, um you know, because we we also have to support those that are currently doing contact tracing because they themselves will have questions. In addition, there there is a group that is kind of like the weekend crew who also helps. Uh they split Saturdays and Sundays uh to address phone calls and emails that come to our our contact tracing line. And so part of that training, like I said, is uh initially started with, you know, what is contact tracing? You know, what's an exposure? What's a positive case? You know, what are the guidelines? What are next steps? What documentation? How are we going to keep track of it? And so that a lot of work went into that. So again, I appreciate, we appreciate uh Josie and her work as director and all the staff that's been part of this work uh moving forward and um you know, will continue to do so uh until until further notice. Thank you. Next up, next slide, please.
All right. Uh thank you, Mr. Moran. And here we have just a quick update again on our COVID nineteen testing program. Heal three sixty is working with the district as a partner on and testing uh around the district at different times and locations throughout the week. Um one thing I wanted to note is that this California Department of Public Health did put out a memo this week that's this past week that stated that there is a lag in labs uh returning the uh test kit. So when when they send them off to the lab, they understand statewide. It's not just SoCal, but also NorCal. There is a big issue with those kits being processed and returned back, but they're working on that and they're working with all of the testing companies such as Heal three sixty to increase that turnaround time. Uh so we heard earlier that the testing is taking a little longer than anticipated. So uh we're hoping that'll get fixed soon. Uh we also have the at home testing kits that we sent home to our students uh and families. Uh the rapid antigen test kits were distributed to school sites and have been sent home to the families through the various individual school sites. And so uh we wanted to make sure that our families had another avenue to tip for students to test uh when they were at home, if they thought they may have had symptoms. And so we were excited that the state provided that to our county and then the county uh to the school district. So with that, that's a quick update on COVID nineteen testing. Next slide, Mike. And that, with that, that ends the presentation.
All right, uh trustees, do you have questions? Who wants to go first?
I'll go first. Trustee La French, go ahead.
Yeah, trust La French.
So I have a question about um on page seven. When you were um speaking concerning um notifying notifying the children. So can you just explain to me if you had a classroom where a child um tested positive? You would actually notify the whole entire classroom? Are you only notifying certain people? I'm just trying to get an understanding on how long that process would take. So you would notify each child individually that they were exposed or each child individually that they were in direct contact? How is it that um they're being notified?
So uh what the CDC and what the state of California has agreed upon is just assume everybody has COVID at this time. And what's been happening administratively is when you do contact tracing yeah in a classroom, you you're looking for students that are sitting near the positive case. And so you would send a letter saying they were a close contact. And then the students that were not considered close contact got a letter as well that said, you're not a close contact, but you were exposed to it. Then there's a third letter that could go out to uh all members of the school just saying that there was a positive case uh regarding a student or staff member without the names. But uh they're trying to do with the group tracing approach is just to say, you know what, COVID happened in your classroom. We just all we want you to be aware. And if if you were following these proper guidelines, and the the one major one is uh your child was wearing a a well-fitted mask, even if they were exposed and and they the thought or process that the CDC and the California are telling us that they'll be okay to stay in school. Um there, I guess, behind the science and the data is that um people are not getting COVID in a close environment when they're wearing mask, properly fitted mask. And I think that's why you uh we've heard about the updates in regards to wearing a surgical mask versus a cloth mask. Um they realize that a surgical mask is more preventive uh than a cloth mask. And so and this is all just happening like right now within uh since like January twelfth, but we're starting to see that science and data coming out as well.
I think that um I was just trying to get an understanding on the three different letters because if you are if you are exposed, so that's everybody that's inside of the classroom, teachers, everybody, they're all exposed, right? So then they all get a letter saying, okay, you've been exposed. Then you have those people that are in direct contact with someone. So that's two letters. So but it was said, exposure letters, close contact letters and non-close contact letters. That's just that that non-contact letter goes out to everybody in the district saying that someone had COVID. The difference between the three.
Yeah, so the three are, the three letters are currently in practice right now. Uh and what they're trying to do is uh allow for school districts not to do the three, but just to make up one blanket statement. So let me give you an example uh this week that we just learned. Uh there is a school district in California that did the group contract tracing. And they actually sent, they're sending the same email to all families in the district that just say, your child was exposed to COVID. That's all that, that's what they're just saying. And so they don't have to do daily messages or anything like that. They're just blanking it out that this is the case. And so uh as we look at that in regards to the numbers, um uh some districts have, you know, like thirty five percent of their students infected with COVID and some have five percent. So they're allowing the school districts to determine that blanket statement, that group tracing approach. And it may change, you know, it may change or their concept is to just make one announcement and one announcement only in order to avoid all this paperwork in regards to the multiple letters you just mentioned, like close contact, non-close contact, as well as an awareness one.
Okay, one other question too. What is modified quarantine?
So the modified quarantine was brand new, just added uh by the CDC. And basically, it comes down to uh wearing a properly fitted mask. In the past, if whether the student was wearing a mask or not, or the staff person was wearing a mask or not, you had to face a ten day quarantine initially. And then they went through this five day quarantine uh announced by the CDC. Well, the modified quarantine says you can actually stay uh in the classroom as a student uh if you're properly wearing a mask. And the reason it's focused on students is because all the even though children are getting COVID, it's still the smallest population of uh in regards to people getting COVID. So they're least likely to get COVID, uh but children do get it, but they're just using science and data. And so that's why this the modified quarantine is applying to uh the children, um so the K through twelve population.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, uh President Ben. On page seven, back to the new public health guidelines. You're not addressing what if a child have symptoms? Then uh this new did not spell that out. What do you do if a child have symptoms?
Uh the child was, so one thing is the child with symptoms are, there's a some recommendations in there about testing a child uh twice during the week. Um and so if a child, let's say, maybe has a cold or a flu and it does not COVID, uh the reason behind testing them twice is to make sure that it's not COVID. Um uh part of the practice in the past is uh with the cold or flu, some parents would just send their kids to school uh if they were sick, it just, you know, it's the, it was the thing that they did, even though we asked them to stay home. So this just allows for the parents to uh um have their child still in school. Whether they have a a symptom of COVID or not, but they test negative.
But if they test positive and they're showing symptoms, then they're quarantined. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, if they, uh yeah, so they would go into quarantine isolation. Yes, if they test positive, yes.
Okay, um my next question is, um LA County is requiring uh teachers and staff uh to wear N ninety five, KN ninety four masks, and they're giving parents masks. Are we planning to give our community masks for our students to wear the properly fitting masks?
Uh we do, and Mr. Cross can actually give you an update on that. I believe uh we did make an order. Is that correct, Mr. Cross?
Yes, Mr. Quintero, and thank you for that question. We ordered a hundred thousand masks, uh the uh KN ninety five and N ninety five. And so uh we should be receiving it any day. We, as well as every other district in the state, ordered them at the same time. So uh hopefully, though, they will be here this week. That's our hope.
Now, are they making those masks for children? Our small children?
I would have to look and see. I I don't believe so at this time. It's only been one size that we were able to find, but I'm sure uh necessity will necessitate somebody makes the smaller sizes. But currently, we have the surgical ones that fit a lot of our students if they twist the the uh the loops around their ears. But uh that's one thing that we did inquire about and and so far, we haven't been able to find a vendor that makes smaller uh KN ninety fives or N ninety fives.
Now, uh before that, well, it's not a mandate, but before that, do we have students, smaller students' masks to give out to our students?
Oh, yes, absolutely. We had little pink ones and little blue ones that we sent to all the sites.
I remember I'm hearing, you know, uh comments, public comments about water, children not having water in the classroom. And I remember um when COVID, when we first got into um supplies for COVID, we ordered water bottles. Um how are the, how are they being used? And are they effective? And do we need to guarantee that our students have water rather than going to a water faucet, putting their mouth on a faucet, maybe touch it, you know, kids will do that. How are we working that out?
It's a great question. We did purchase water bottles for staff and students and continue to do so as sites identify the needs. Uh students are able to use the uh water faucets and fountains to fill up their water bottles. Uh still, it's not recommended to drink from them directly, but uh we will identify the sites that potentially will need more uh this week and take care of that if it if there is a shortage of those bottles. But definitely, there's a large supply that we've given out already and will continue to do so because we want to make sure that everybody has the ability to have water uh during the day at school.
Thank you. And I I and I just also want to just give a shout out to our staff for stepping up and uh doing contact tracing. I think I'm, what I'm hearing is that you guys are doing a tremendous job. And I know we're not done yet. And uh I know we're still in the midst of negotiations on that, but trust me, I I really appreciate what you're doing. And uh because you know our students and you know, you care. And so I just want to say thank you so much. I think that's, oh, okay, on home testing kits. Um are you getting any feedback on those kits and are they easy to use? Those are home testing kits that are sent home to our parents.
I can speak for my department. I haven't heard anything back as far as feedback yet, but Mr. Quintero was going to ask Mr. Quintero perhaps if he'd heard anything yet.
Yeah, just the iHome uh test kits, uh the ones that are in the orange boxes, actually. Just just to make sure this is referenced, this is not commercializing. But the only, the instructions only came in English first and foremost, and and they are a little bit complicated. Um so what I did just, you know, on our website for, I put iHelp uh testing webpage up and I and the instructions I found in Spanish as well. So it's in English and Spanish documentation. And then also, I put two YouTube videos, uh one of the English and Spanish. So that way, our families can use this as a reference to help them use those test kits.
And how often are we going to give uh be uh giving out those test kits?
Uh that's based on the state of California and the federal government. Is that correct, uh, Mr. Cross?
Yes, currently, we only receive the one-time shipment and there's no other uh shipment in the works. However, uh there is, uh parents and families can order from the federal government test kits, uh currently the exact same ones. And and Mr. Quintero, I know that you ordered that. And if you just want to tell the the group how that worked.
Yeah, I did. Uh just so you know, I did order the at-home test kits. It took a few days, it arrived Saturday, the one I just showed you. And um a couple of things, just really quick. The government was trying to correct the website when they uh first went live with it because if you lived in an apartment complex, uh it was not, it was thinking you were living in the same residence. Uh and so they weren't allowing everybody in the apartment complex, uh complex to get the uh the kits. Uh hopefully, that has been corrected. Um also, I did on the at-home uh iTest website page I created, I did put a link there for the United States Postal Service for where you can order those for yourself. Um and we did share that with all the school sites as well. So um I think, you know, I hopefully the federal government continue, will continue to give those away as long as there is request and demand for them.
Okay, great. Um you know, I've been getting emails and um Dr. Mitchell addressed it, but I just want to make it public about our surveillance testing and our and our security protocol. Um I just want everyone to know that uh uh Dr. Mitchell will be looking at that and make sure that our sites are safe for our students and staff um for people coming in. Um we don't want any open doors. Uh so everyone, you know, keep a lookout. You know, we may not be able to get everything, but I want everyone to keep a lookout. If somewhat, something looks strange, say something and have a vigilant eye out. Um because the safety of our our district is important. I just want to let everyone know that. And that's all I have on COVID. Thank you.
Trustee, I just was piggybacking on that, trustee Turner. Today, I sat in front of West Side Park for twenty minutes uh staring at the line for surveillance testing. And so I was proud to see that we have uh the surveillance testing working out of the auditorium, which does not offer inside access to school. I was happy to see that we have plenty of staff monitoring the lines. And I was happy to see that we had staff and parents and kids in the line orderly. And uh it was moving briskly. And so I have asked staff to make sure that we uh put up signage, that we prioritize staff to get tested. Uh and I'm I'm requiring that we not uh that we use the auditoriums, so it has an outside. Uh, and I'm, I'm requiring that we not, uh, that we use the auditoriums, so it has an outside entrance and does not allow uh that line to breach the interior of the school, so I appreciate that comment from Ms. Ornola and an email from her. And I, and uh, we, I did act upon that today, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Trustee Eck, Eck, Eckes?
Yes, I apologize, I have several questions, I'll try to make it quick. Um, so I'm curious, uh, so what would happen if school districts didn't do any of the re- required mandates? Um, I want to know, would they get fined, would there be no money given to the district? Would they shut down? What would be the punishment for school districts that don't do any of this?
So trustee, yeah, because we, we've covered this uh in closed session, and so I'll share again, I did share a letter from our JPA uh that provides the, our insurance coverage, so the only mandate that is, that is enforced right now is the mandate to, uh, to attest to your, to your vaccination status, and if you're not vaccinated, you're required.
I'm sorry, um, trustee Turner, can you take, oh, oh, over, I have a sit, 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 situation outside. I gotta take care.
Okay, okay.
I'm so sorry, sorry. All right.
Hope everything is okay, trustee Ben.
So, just to continue, um, the only mandate that is in place right now as we speak is the mandate to attest to your vaccination status, which our staff has complied with. And if you're not vaccinated, you must comply with weekly surveillance testing. We have, uh, we have, uh, we have, uh, provided Hill three sixty to assist with these, the weekly surveillance testing for our staff who are not vaccinated, and that is the only mandate. I know that the, the governor did talk about a mandate for, mandated vaccine, vaccines for children. This is not in effect right now, and I understand that there's, people are saying, hey, say no to the mandate, but he hasn't issued that mandate yet. But the only one we're operating under now is the attestation form and the mandatory uh weekly surveillance testing. If we do not do that, the JPA has sent a letter to all school districts in the county to suggest if you do not, if you do not um implement the governor's mandate, you are personally liable as board members to lawsuit and litigation.
Okay, I understand that, and I guess people just don't understand my questions. I know we talked about it in closed session, but the public has a right to know why school districts are doing this. I get feedback from people all the time asking me, is it about the money? Are districts getting a bunch of money, is that why they're doing this? So I kind of asked a couple times if I could get something from the governor's office or something that was sent to school districts on why we're even doing this. I know it's, it's just expected, I know a lot of people are doing it, but I also want to, I want people who don't understand it, or who ha, who want to question it, which they have a right to do because their rights are being taken away by their bodies being uh violated by having to either get the vaccine or attest up their body uh cavities. I mean, it, it's very intrusive, and it is taking away people's freedom. And I feel we owe the public an explanation on why we're, what's the real reason why we're doing this? Is it about money? What has the governor said? I understand about the whole JP thing and everything else, but I need to answer to the public. They have questions, I'm here to answer, ask those questions for them, and I still feel like I haven't gotten those direct answers, I still don't know what to tell the public when they ask me, is it about the money, are we getting a bunch of money? Uh, if we stop doing it, does the money stop? And I think many people are aware that there was a judge last week in Texas that said that he found the, the mandates to, for federal workers um to be um illegal. And I, I haven't heard anything, how does that affect our schools? Yes, our governor might decide to keep doing what he's doing, but if these courts, the Supreme Courts and judges are saying it's not legal, they want it stopped, uh, Ocean, OSHA has no right doing this. I mean, these are real questions that are out there, they're in the news. I, I know a lot of people are, are now relieved that they don't have to be vaccinated or even tested now for their jobs. This is what's going on in the real world, and I want to know how it affects our schools now, and I haven't heard anything. So as a board member and just somebody in the public, I would like to know, after that judge's ruling, how does it affect our school system? When are we gonna hear an update on that? Um, do we go against what these judge or, or judges are ruling? I, I, I'm very curious with, with these answers, so that's why I'm asking these questions. It's not to be um redundant or to be nasty, I am asking these questions for the public, they want answers. That's why you're getting a lot of frustrated people calling in, board meeting after board meeting, they don't understand it. They look to us to give them answers, to give them information, we're not all living in a box where we all know one thing. We know a lot of things, and if we're paying attention to the news and we're listening to what's going on, that, these judges and courts are getting rid of these mandates. And I'm just kind of curious to know how our state is still doing it when other people aren't. So, um, I don't know, if somebody can give me answers someday on all this, I would love it. Until then, I may keep asking these questions until I get answers. So if you can find out anything for me with that new court ruling, that would be wonderful. And I'd kind of like to know how it affects our state when other states aren't doing it. I don't know, I, I would really like to have some answers, because as far as I know, California is pretty much the main one that's doing it because of our governor. So anyway, I'll just leave, leave that there, but that's why I keep asking is because the public wants to know, they want answers too. So, uh, thank you, thank you.
Happy to look into that.
Thank you, are there any other questions on uh COVID nineteen presentation?
I just wanted to say that if you look on Amazon, Amazon does have kids ninety-five masks.
Thank you for that, trustee LeFrenche.
One other thing too, I just want to say really quickly, um, it's still a concern of mine that we have so many different letters that we send out. Um, so if maybe you want to network with the, a county of San Bernardino, they're not sending out three or four different letters, we've been sending out blanket letters to groups of people for the last two years. That would be a good resource.
Thank you for that. Okay, good, moving on to fifteen new business, fifteen oh one business services, approval of addendum with School Services of California for C A D I E and a C A B R E report on salary and benefit comparisons, can I get a motion?
Uh, Eckes, I motion?
Have a motion by trustee Eckes, is there a second?
Love French, I second.
Love French, second, okay, we're in discussion, I'll turn that over to you, Dr. Mitchell.
Uh, thank you, and Mr. Kraus, if you could provide a brief explanation of this one.
Yes, thank you, uh, one of the things that we wanted to do is look into a comparison of other districts related to our district as, as it relates to salaries and benefits and where we may rank, and so School Services has a lot of data on various districts of our size and comparability, and so these uh reports will be very beneficial to our district once completed and give us a, a high-level overview as well as a detailed overview of where we compare with other districts, and so we're excited to bring this to the board this evening to get this process started uh on this information, thank you.
Uh, board, do you have any questions regarding um the benefit comparisons?
I think this would be in a good faith to do this, because I know in the past, the board has asked uh the superintendents to uh do their own search and come back to the board when we do negotiations on, on what other districts are paying and doing. So to actually have a company that'll do it, I think it'll show good faith to everybody and, and let them know that we did our due diligence to find out what's going on out there and do comparisons, so I think it's good, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Eckes, trustee LeFrenche?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, I, and I agree, I think uh this would be good for our community, um, for our district. You know, doing a salary comparison is very good, we need to keep up uh with inflation and cost of living. Okay, so no more comments, I'll call for the rule.
Ben's is back.
Yes, and, and I'm back, thank, thank you so, so much. Trustee Eckes?
I.
Trustee LeFrenche?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I.
Trustee Ben? Ben's, I, mo, my mo, motion pa, passes for zero, zero. Madam President, also, if I may, I just want to announce that at ten fifteen, you did have to step out, and you returned back at twenty-two PM. Yes, thank, thank, thank you, it seemed like much long, longer, I was like, I gotta get back. Uh, okay, I'm sorry, sorry about, about, about that, I really, really am. Um, okay, so we are now at fif, fifteen point zero, zero two, biz, business ser, services considered situation of school fa, facilities, but funding a green agreement in connection with the mod modification of community facilities di- district, now number four of the Odd, Oddalanto uh elementary school di- district. Uh, can I please get a mo, motion to approve?
Eckes, I motion?
Thank you so much, can I get a sec, second?
Love French, second.
Thank you so much, uh, do, uh, we are open for discuss, discussion? Do we have any discuss, discussion, because we've already been warned about this?
Can we just have a real quick, brief uh summary?
Uh, Mr. Kraus? I'm sorry, miss Eckes.
I'm sorry, just a brief summary so the public understands what we're doing.
Absolutely, thank you for the opportunity to present all of these items related to the community.
Try to give an overview of the fifteen oh two to fifteen, uh, what's that, fifteen oh seven, oh, oh eight? Thank you.
Absolutely, so in a nutshell, all of these items relate to the Community Facilities District number four, uh, which you may recall, if you saw driving down Cobalt and Mojave, a lot of uh new homes going up over there by Melva Davis and, and West Creek in that area, and so that's Community Facilities District number four. Fifteen years ago, there were agreements in place that needed to be updated. At the December uh board meeting, the board approved uh the opportunity to update those agreements. This is the first of one of those agreements to update the funding, to bring it into modern times as we move forward, working with DR Horton, who's the developer, the only developer and the only landholder over on CFD number four, and so all of these items related to that, just updating the process, going through the motions of updating the terms of the funding agreement and updating the bonding capacity for Community Facilities District number four. This will benefit the district in the long run as we receive funding based on the development that's over there. And so as we look towards the future, uh, updating these agreements by the board really gives us the opportunity to mitigate more families moving in and any cost that the district might incur in the future, and so I know it seems like it's very complicated because there's a lot of items, but I want to thank uh Rob Anslo, who's here with us, as well as Jesse Landry, for helping facilitate getting these items to board. A lot of them are all just the legal process uh to facilitate moving forward on improving Community Facilities District number four.
Okay, thank you. Can, 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 can I have a vote, please? Yes, uh, trustee Eckes?
I.
Trustee LeFrenche? Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I.
Trustee Ben? Ben's, I, mo, motion passes for zero, zero, zero. And we're on to fif, fifteen point zero three. Okay, to be honest, I'm really excited right here, and read, reading out loud isn't my strong suit. If some, someone else would like to read, read that, so that we, we can get, get through, through this, I would really appreciate it.
No worries, trustee Ben's side, I'm, I'll be happy to, uh, fifteen oh three Business Services, approved resolution number twenty-one dot twenty-two dot twelve of the Board of Trustees of the Oddalanto Elementary School District, acting as the legislative body of the Community Facilities District, CFD number four, determining the validity of prior proceedings and calling a special election with Community Facilities District, CFD number four.
Okay, thank, thank you, can I get a mo, motion to approve?
Have a most, trustee Turner, motion to approve.
And can I get a sec, second, please?
Love French, I second.
Okay, we're open for discuss, discussion?
I have a, well, this is statement, um, I read that since, um, there's only one developer, that there's no reason for a special election within the Community Facility District, am I correct on that?
I will let Mr. Rob Anslo answer that briefly, but we do need it, we didn't, we did need to have the election, but uh, Mr. Anslo, can you just briefly touch on that?
Hi, Michael, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, uh, thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Um, there is a process whereby if a single uh landowner holds the property that was put into a place by the Melrose Act, there are significant questions about whether or not that process is constitutional under provisions of Article thirteen of the Constitution. The majority view is that they are not constitutional, and so you still need to conduct the election, which we're going to do tonight. That's already been done, the mail ballot has already been received by Mr. Kraus. So we would recommend very strongly that you proceed with the agenda items as we prepare them.
Okay. I, I just mentioned that because somewhere we're reading all of this and said that uh, because it was one, one developer that it probably wasn't necessary, but yeah, we're gonna go ahead and do it. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, can I get a vote, please? Trustee Eckes?
I.
Trustee LeFrenche?
Love French, I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I.
Trustee Ben? Ben's, I, uh, mo, motion pass, passes for zero, zero. Now we move on to fif, fifteen point zero, zero four.
Thank you, Business Services approved resolution number twenty-one dot twenty-two dot thirteen of the Board of Trustees of the Oddalanto Elementary School District, acting as the legislative body of the Community Facilities District, CFD number four, determining the necessity to incur bonded indebtedness in an amount not to exceed twenty million within Community Facilities District number four, calling an election and taking related actions.
Okay, can, can I get a mo, motion to approve?
Trustee Turner, I motion to approve.
And can I get a se, second, please?
Second, Love French.
Thank you, and now we need, need a, a vote? Any discussion, Madam President, or just? Oh, that's right. Do we have any discussion, questions? Hearing that?
I, I thought I saw something mentioned there about, um, oh, what do you call it? Um, uh, I'm losing my train of thought at the moment, um, oh, gosh, um. Boy, I'm losing it, it started with a B, um. Are we doing, um, oh, my goodness, um, bonds? Is this the one, are, are we doing bonds with this one? I thought I saw the word bonds in the paperwork. Yeah, uh, necessary to incur bonded uh indep, indebtedness, can someone explain that to me?
Madam President and members of the board, this is Rob Anslo again. Um, what we are doing is authorizing CFD number four in the future to issue bonded indebtedness up to an amount of twenty million dollars. The actual amount that will be issued will be considerably south of that, we don't know exactly how far because we don't know where interest rates will be. But essentially, as part of the Melrose Act proceedings, we're increasing the bonding capacity of CFD number four so that we don't bump up against the ceiling that was approved fifteen years ago when economic conditions were very different. But we're not issuing bonds at this time, that'll happen in the future as the development within CFD number four takes place.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I, I know as a trustee, I was taught a long time ago, be careful of that word, you know, and so that's when I saw that, I thought, oh, I better ask questions, thank you.
And the bonds will be supported by the special taxes in CFD number four, they will not be a general fund pledge.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, so now can I get, get, get a vote? Yes, trustee Eckes?
I.
Trustee LeFrenche? Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I.
Trustee Ben? Ben, Ben's, I, mo, motion pa, passes for zero, zero, zero. Now we move on to fif, fifteen point zero five.
Thank you, Madam President, Business Services approved the combined special. Thank you, Madam President. Business Services approved the combined special elections results in connection with the modification of certain terms and parameters of Community Facilities District, uh, Number Four of the Oddalanto Elementary School District. And, uh, Mr. Kraus, it's my understanding you need to report the elections.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Mitchell, uh, members of the board. After calling the special election, as Mr. Anslow had stated earlier, we have, I have in my hand the ballots from D R Horton of Los Angeles, signed by Vicky Gillian, Assistant Secretary for D R Horton. And for all seventy-six parcels, they are all I and yeses. And so the special election is a unanimous yes on both resolutions. And with that, we recommend that the board approve, uh, this item.
Okay, can, can I get, get a?
Madam President?
I'm sorry, yes?
Sorry to interrupt. Fifteen point oh five doesn't actually need formal board action. The formal board action is under fifteen oh six and fifteen oh seven. Fifteen oh five is the informational report by Michael to the board.
Oh. Okay.
We can move to fifteen oh six.
Okay. All right, so that's one to fif- fifteen point zero six.
Thank you. Business Services approved resolution number twenty-one dot twenty-two dot fourteen of the Board of Trustees of the Oddalanto Elementary School District, acting as the legislative body of the Community Facilities District Number Four, canvassing the results of the special election, uh, within Community Facilities District Number Four.
Okay, can I get a mo- motion to approve?
A trustee Turner, I motion.
Okay, and can I get a sec- second?
Second, La French.
Thank you. And we're o- open for discuss- discussion? Hearing that, let's call for the vote.
Trustee Ekkas?
Hi.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I mo- motion pa- passes for zero. Okay, now we move, move on to fif- fifteen point zero seven.
Thank you. Business Services approved resolution number twenty-one dot twenty-two dot fifteen of the Board of Trustees of the Oddalanto Elementary School District, as the legislative body of the Community Facilities District Number Four, changing the rate and method of apportionment of special taxes within Community Facilities District Number Four, changing the description of the public facilities that Community Facilities District Number Four is authorized to finance and taking related actions.
Okay, thank, thank you. Can, can I get a mo- motion to approve?
Trustee. If you can give it to trustee La French.
Okay, La French, and I need a sec- second?
Trustee Turner, I second.
Turner, we're o- open for de- discuss- discussion? Hearing that, uh, let's get, get a vote.
Trustee Ekkas?
Hi.
Trustee La French? Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I.
Trustee Benz?
Ben- Benz, I mo- motion pa- passes for zero, zero. And we go down to fif- fifteen point zero eight.
Thank you, Business Services. First reading of the ordinance of Community Facilities District, Number Four of the Lawto- Oddalanto Elementary School District, authorizing the levy of a special tax within Community Facilities District. C F D.
Can I?
Madam President, the motion would be to waive the reading of the entire ordinance and to present the reading of the ordinance by reading of the title only.
Okay, so you threw my train of thought. So am I saying, I, I, I need, need a mo- motion to waive the rea- rea- reading?
Waive the reading and present the ordinance by reading of the title only.
Okay, I need a mo- motion to waive the, I need a script.
Okay, but did you get all of that, Exenia? Do you know what?
Yes, it's to waive the reading of the ordinance and present by title only. Okay. Can I get a mo- motion?
I motion.
Thank you. Can I get a sec- second?
Trustee Turner, I second.
Thank you all for being so pa- pa- patient with me and my scrambled brains. Um, open for discuss- discussion? Hearing that, let's call for the vote.
Trustee Ekkas?
Hi.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I.
Trustee Benz?
Ben- Benz, I, um, mo- motion pass- passes for zero.
I'm sorry. President Benz, I'm sorry, I have a question. President Benz, we need to go back to fifteen oh five. Um, I know we didn't vote on that, but do we need to do something else to say that it was just a discussion?
Um, well, what, what could we do?
We can, Madam President, it can just be shown as an informational item. There is no actual approval. The actual approvals was done in fifteen oh six.
So, so can we ma- make a note, note on that for, for the boardmen?
The suggestion would be to simply make a note that the results of the special tax and bond election were pre- presented by Mr. Kraus under fifteen oh five. As an informational item.
Okay.
Do you have that, Exenia, in your notes?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And Madam President, we would note that the ordinance will be presented for its second reading and adoption at the meeting of February eighth.
Okay.
So, Exenia has that in the notes as well. Thank you.
I'm glad she, 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 she does, because I'm tr- trying to keep up and I'm like, I don't know. Ah, okay. All right, so let's go on to fif- fifteen point zero nine. Um, in interview and a point- appointment of Board of Trustee can- candidate for trustee air- area five.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. We do have both candidates on, um, and I thought we would go in alphabetical order, uh, starting with, uh, Carrie McKee. So, Ms. McKee, if you could, uh, unmute yourself.
Dr. Mitchell, before we get started with that, could you explain the process of what's gonna happen tonight?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Thank you. So, uh, so, so for, for the benefit of the community, we, the, the board has directed me to, uh, post this va- vacancy in the newspaper, which we did not do, uh, given the short timeline, but we think it's prudent for the board to post the vacancy and, and I'm going to talk with the county superintendent to get an extension. Uh, the board has sixty days to make an appointment. Our sixty days are up at the end of this month. I'm gonna request an extension from the County Superintendent of Schools, uh, office tonight, actually. And, uh, we will interview both candidates tonight and, uh, will hold appointment until after uh, such a time that we're able to post the vacancy, uh, for a few days and hopefully reconvene this session, um, on February eighth. We, we, we would interview any new, uh, any additional applicants, but move the, move, uh, the two, uh, application or interview, uh, information forward from tonight. So we will host the interviews tonight for our candidates and then the board will, um, will post the vacancy in the news, in our local newspapers and then we'll reconvene, uh, this session on February eighth.
Yes, uh, yes, we, we just want, want to make, make sure we're fol- following our board po- po- policies. So we, we will in- 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 interview, but just not, uh, appoint yet until our, hopefully, on the Feb- February, where we eighth board meet, meeting. Okay, all right. Do I have to move, have a mo- mos- motion to o- open it up?
No, this is not an action item. This is a, uh,
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna start with Ms. Mc- McKee, right?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Uh, Mi- Mr. Uh, Assuma, do you see Carrie McKee in? And if so, could you unmute her? Yeah, I just saw her. Thank you. Welcome, Ms. McKee.
Hello.
So, uh, board president, I turn it over to you. Thank you.
Okay, uh, well, welcome in, Ms. Mc- McKee. Uh, thanks for your, um, I think, thank you for your pa- patience. And the board just has, um, a, a, a few, few que- questions we'd like to ask you. We, we each have one question that we'd li- like to ask, ask you. Tru- trustee Turn- Turner, Turner may start.
Uh, thank you, Ms. McKee, for, uh, uh, putting in your, uh, application for candidacy. Um, my question is, and my question will be the same for all candidates, so they'll get my question and it'll be for, being a board member require, requires that you interact with various groups that represent different interests. Please tell us about your involvement with different groups and how you would balance different interests as a board member.
I've been involved in several different types of groups that take, uh, group decisions. We all have to take each other's, um, advice and opinions into consideration. I've been on horse advisory boards and committees. Uh, I am a community co-community leader for a four H group here in the high desert. I am also a project leader. I work with, um, being a four H leader, we work with the state and the university. We take classes yearly, we attend meetings, we communicate with a county representative as well as other groups in our area to decide what is the best, um, implemented actions for the kids' safety and guidelines um, and four H as well as we've been going through a lot of COVID protocol into keeping our children safe and, you know, distance, um, moving our meetings outside, outdoors. And so we have to be in communication with a lot of different levels on the state level and the county level, you know, and the youth group organizations that I'm involved in as well.
Thank you. Hi, I have question number two. Question number two reads, you, I, you identify different areas of concern with the school district. Can you further discuss how you would work with other board members to address your concerns?
If I had concerns, at this time, I did not have any concerns, um, directly. We would talk about the topic and get everybody's opinion and view on the different concerns that we have and, you know, come to terms with everybody's opinion taken into consideration to find an outcome.
Thank you. Trustee Benz, you're muted.
Sorry, thank, thank, thank you. How embarrassing. Okay, here we go. Um, as a board mem- member, you will be asked to co- commit a sign- significant, um, amount of time to rep- representing the, the dis- district. Well, what is your view of the time co- commitment required?
I do have a lot of open time, um, being mostly a stay-at-home mom. You know, and a four H community leader, we have a couple of meetings a month, but other than that, I have a pretty open schedule.
Okay, and trustee E- Ekkas?
Hi, yeah, I'm trying to, my battery almost. I'm so sorry. I'm all plugged in. I hope it's working. Okay. Uh, my question is, uh, what process would you use to make decisions as a board member?
I'm sorry, you broke up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, what process would you use to make decisions as a board member?
The, the process we would have, well, I would do is get a, we would have to talk about it as a group. It's a team. You know, effort, it's not on one person. So we have to work together as a team to discuss whatever topic that we're talking about. And, you know, let everybody, um, voice their opinion. My opinion's still gonna be my opinion, but we also need to hear everybody else's choice of the matter.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Okay, and that, that's all the questions we have at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKee. Uh, as was suggested earlier, we're not really clear on the timeline as yet. Uh, we will, I'll know some more tomorrow when specific timeline will be. You won't have to interview again, though. And so, uh, the board will, uh, at the latest, will forward this to our February eighth board meeting. Be at the soonest, maybe this Saturday, in a special board meeting. We'll know to more, more tomorrow morning. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And so, uh, the board, the board invites Stephanie Webster. Uh, Mr. Assuma, if you can see if Ms. Webster's on and unmute her. Good evening, Ms. Webster, uh, you're on mute. I see.
Hi, good evening. How are you?
God, I think you turned your camera off.
Uh-oh. Hmm, it's not allowing me to start my video. The host has it disabled.
There you are.
There you go.
Hi, good evening. How are we?
Good, thank you. You're welcome. Um, were you on when I talked about, um, pushing the board's schedule out a little bit on this?
Yes, sir, I was.
Okay, good. Thank you, thank you. So the board welcomes you, uh, trustee Benz. Turn over you.
Okay, so we'll, we'll just start, start ru- start off. Um, trust, trustee Turn- Turner?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Webster, for putting your application in to be considered as a candidate for, um, a trustee. Uh, being a board member requires that you interact with various groups that represent different interests. Please tell us about your involvement with different groups and how you would balance different interests as a board member.
My hands-on, um, hasn't been as productive. Um, I don't really work within the community as much as I would like to. One of the main reasons why I want to be more involved with this board and get involved with my community. Um, I feel like one experience that would greatly influence my ability to is the fact that I work with numerous attorneys on a regular basis. I also work with attorneys as a legal assistant, um, going around on different various federal trials in regards to children's safety. Um, I feel like being a part of the board members, I have to really take into consideration the cons- the community standard of what they're looking for. And when I'm faced with that decision, I'm gonna really be face, looking at not only facts and data, but also what our community is asking for, um, our parents, our staff, and our faculty.
Okay, uh, thank you. Tru- trustee La French?
Okay, good evening, Ms. Webster. Good evening. Okay, I have question number two.
Yes.
You identify different areas of concern with the school district. Can you further discuss how you would work with other board members to address your concerns?
When addressing the other board members, I feel that being a representative on this board, I'm representing the, the community. I'm gonna definitely bring their opinions to this board more than my own because I feel that's very biased. Um, and as for working with them, I understand that negotiations and also different point of views will always be brought to the table. I feel that listening, understanding, and also putting yourself in other people's shoes is a really, really, really good place to start when communicating with the board.
All right, thank, 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 thank you. Uh, three is mine. Uh, as a board mem- member, you will be asked to co- commit a significant am- amount of time to rep- representing the dis- district. What, what is your view of the time commitment required?
Um, time management, I believe, is one of my best qualities. I understand that this would be a great deal of investment and one that I'm very, very prepared to invest as this is our community and it is the future that we are building.
All right, thank, thank you. And trustee E- Ekkas?
Okay, good evening. Uh, what process would you use to make decisions as a board member?
The processes that I use every day. I believe that facts and data are essential to decisions. And then also the community standard and what they, as a community, as parents, our staff, our faculty is not only searching for, but begging for. Um, and that really would be how I Um, and that really would be how I lean, is what our people really want.
Thank you.
All right, thank, thank you.
And I appreciate all of you for giving me your time tonight. I wanna say thank you so much for the consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Mitch- Mitchell, so?
Yes, and so we, we would, uh, we would forego fifteen point one oh uh, the off, the oath of office, uh, giving the, given the board's direction tonight. And so I'll be hard to work tonight and in the morning to, to square all this way, and I will make sure I communicate with the board. Uh, where we land on all this, I'm hoping to speak with Ted tonight. I do have a text in with him and he said, uh, he'd be available to me later tonight, so I'll be calling him. And then we'll go from there and I'll let the board know. And then I'll be advising the community, uh, shortly thereafter. So, thank you so much. So I think we're on.
We're on, um, six, sixteen point zero, 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 zero one, su- superintendent's report.
Thank you so much. Um, I know it's late. I, I do have a few things I'd like to share with our community and our staff and our board. And so, I, I do wanna extend my, uh, sincere condolences on behalf of the board uh, to the family of amazing grandy, uh, nine-year-old student, uh, Eagle Ranch had recently passed. Uh, had an opportunity along with trustee Turner to attend as well as along with the principal and several staff members, uh, to attend her services. And so our hearts go out to her family. Uh, and our prayers go out to your family as well. So, um, just wanted to share that with our community. Uh, on Saturday, I also had the opportunity to attend, uh, the memorial service for Dr. Margaret, uh, B. Hill. A longtime board member in Assembly, Davidson Unified School District, as well as a longtime administrator in the seven, you know, area. And, uh, she had, uh, had a memorial service at the sixty-sixth stadium. Had an opportunity to speak, uh, on behalf of the board to extend the board's condolences to the family. Uh, and so just wanted to share, share that. Had an opportunity, uh, meeting cabinet, attended the last Rotary meeting, uh, where I had an opportunity to speak to the Victor Hill Rotary and gave them kind of a state of the, of the district address. And so enjoyed talking with them and, and told them what our current challenges are with staffing and COVID and how we're working hard to keep staff and students safe in these times. Uh, the challenges that come with all this work that we're doing, the complexity of the work that we're doing. But also gave them a great picture for our, our thoughts for the future that we're building uh, toward the future and that we're putting things in place to, uh, to enjoy our success once we get past uh, the COVID challenges. And so, uh, they produced the newsletter and I think it went broadly to the community um, to, uh, this week as well. One, one, um, couple other announcements. I just wanted to share that in human resources under Mr. Moran's leadership, we have decided to conduct, to facilitate a second classified job fair. We had so much success from the first one. We just hired so many people in the community and we did the testing and we helped with job, we helped with the applications and we got all that stuff done in one place and we we netted a lot of good substitute staff as well as full-time and part-time staff. And so our next, uh, classified job fair will be held on Saturday, March fifth at Mason Linda Middle School from nine AM to two. So we're looking forward, uh, to, to Carlos's staff doing another outstanding job uh, to recruit high-quality staff for, uh, to serve our, the students and families and a lot of elementary school district. Also want to, uh, report to the community that we are currently conducting our vision, hearing screenings that are taking place at all of our schools. And so just wanted to make sure that the community knew about that. And then lastly, board, uh, for your consideration, I will be sharing my screen. I want to kind of lay out the, some board presentations that the board has asked me to look into. And so I'm gonna I'm gonna have you take a look at and recommend feedback on it. So I, I lay out, can you all see board, uh, two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two board presentation schedule? Thank you. So this is a draft of how I, how we might spend the rest of the year. I want to then kind of transition our board meetings to begin to give the board critical information about how our schools are operating and the things that we're doing and to make sure that you also are seeing some critical things that are coming up for the future. So you'll see here that on January twenty-fifth, um, oh, that was tonight. We, we, we did the government's, uh, proposed budget presentation. I was like, yeah, that sounds very familiar. That's, that's tonight. Um, but then on the eighth, um, Dr. Dwyer's, uh, will frame us up with our professional learning and collaboration plans. If you recall last year, each of the schools came to the board and gave you a presentation on their professional learning plans and the things that they're doing to improve achievement amongst students and staff. And so we'll start off on the eighth by hearing from West Side Park, Morgan Kincaid in Columbia. We also could, we also, uh, compliance-wise, we need to give you an update on S R three and give you some information on that. And then on, uh, February twenty-second, we'll hear from, uh, Vic- Victoria McGathen and, uh, and Melva Davis. We will also begin to share with you some academic data. You haven't seen that in years. And so our school has just completed, uh, uh, administering our benchmarks. Um, and so we have that data on how our kids are doing and we want to give a progress report to the district on just where our kids are standing right now in relation to, uh, the standards. And so we're looking forward to that. I did, uh, have a conversation with, with, uh, trustee Benz and she's asked me to include a small board discussion each board meeting that the board will have with each other by parsing out pieces of the governance handbook. And so we'll start, we're there with a piece. So I, uh, my next agenda setting with, uh, trustee Benz, I have, uh, I've kind of parsed out the governance handbook so that we, we don't want to look at the whole handbook in one night. So I, I have a recommendation that I give to trustee Benz on how we might parse that out over five or six meetings. You'll see here, governance handbook, handbook discussion here. And then in March fifteenth, you know, April, and then April twenty-sixth, and then lastly in May. So just, just a recommendation based upon trustee Benz's request. And then here, board, I'm proposing, uh, we'll have a new board member. We'll have our fifth board member by this time. And so I'm proposing that we go away Friday, March third to Sunday, March sixth, for our board of trustees and executive cabinet retreat. I'd also would plan to have CSBA facilitate a board superintendent workshop during that time to, during that time together. So, board, if you could check your calendars real quick and just see if that works.
Yeah, um, Mar- March third is a Thurs- Thursday, so Mar- March fourth is a Friday.
Okay, so I'm wrong all day. Got it, let me change that.
And I'm, I'm good, Ben. I don't have plans. I don't have, have a life, so I'm good.
Uh, trustees, could you check your calendars too, please? So I have Vince's good for that.
Vince is good as well.
You're good as well, La French is good. Trusty Turner?
I'm good.
Good, trustee Ekis?
I honestly don't know. I, this, I was caught off guard. I don't know what my schedule will be at that time.
Okay.
I us- I usually work weekends, so I'm gonna have to get back to you.
Okay, great. Ple- please do. And we'll, we'll try to accommodate. I know that uh, it's, I know that Ms. Benz and La French, uh, during the week is harder and the weekends are, so there's never an ideal date, so I, I, I appreciate if you look into that. And, uh, and then I will get to organizing, uh, presentation per, per the board's request uh, to have CSBA come in and facilitate a, a governance workshop for the board while we're away. And also, it would be happy to take recommendations on where you'd like to meet. Last time we were in Palm Springs, I thought that was a good venue for us. Um, but, but we're, we're open to wherever the board, uh, wants to go. So I'll have Xenia put together two or three um, potential sites and then, uh, see what, see what the, what the board's, uh, preference is. So thank you for that. And moving on with the board presentation schedule, on March fifteenth, I'm recommending that, uh, well, not, well, the state recommends uh, that we do the second interim report and the LCAP update. So that'll be, uh, Mr. Kraus and Dr. Dwyer's on together. And then we would hear, uh, from the professional learning collaboration plans from Eagle Ranch and George. And then another piece of the board governance handbook discussion, um, uh, April twelfth. We hear from Ted Vick, El Mirage, and Adelata Elementary. And then on this one, you're going, we're, we're going to T F some data on suspension, expulsion, P Y S, S E L, that whole ball of wax from the start of school to January. We want to give the board a picture of how our children and staff are doing as it relates to, uh, discipline and suspension. And then, of course, do some more governance handbook work. Uh, April twenty-sixth, we would hear from Gus Franklin and Wes, uh, Wes Creek. Uh, and then, uh, the, the academic services under Dr. Dwyer's on will begin to talk to the board about the secondary schools' late start plan for twenty-two, twenty-three. As you know, uh, we're required, middle schools and secondary schools cannot start prior to eight o'clock. We currently have two of our middle schools that start probably at eight o'clock. So I've asked Dr. Dwyer's on to put together, um, start planning right now um, to, to make this transition next year. And we think by that time, we'd be able to get the board an update. Um, we also want to push in, I've asked, uh, Mr. Moran to talk to, to, uh, celebrate our anniversary increments for ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five-year, uh, veterans in our district for, for this year. And then go back to a little bit of board governance handbook discussion. And then in, and in, uh, May, we talk, uh, we hear from Mason Linda Middle School and Braddock Elementary from their professional learning and collaboration plans. And then I've asked Dr. Dwyer's on to talk to the board about our independent study, virtual academy, and our planning for universal TK starting in twenty-two, twenty-three. So that should be a great discussion, all of our kind of alternative programs. Uh, and then hear some, do some more governance work. And then in, uh, in, in May, uh, Mr. Kraus is always excited to give, uh, the May revised presentation. It'll be kind of the second part of what you saw tonight. Governor comes out in January, we're kind of hating some, some broad numbers, and then in May, he hammers that down a little bit more, and we'll be able to hear from Michael on that. And then I've asked, uh, Dr. Dwyer's on to talk about summer school and then our professional development over the summer and things that we're doing with teachers. And then I've asked Mr. Moran uh, to, let's get it, let's celebrate our retirees, both from twenty-twenty-one as well as twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, and so that'll be a big night. And then in June, it's all budget adoption. So, uh, June, June fourteenth, we'll do the, uh, regular budget adoption for twenty-two, twenty-three as well as an LCAP public hearing. And then on the twenty-eighth, you'll hear, you'll have the LCAP adoption for next year. And then we start all over in July. So, uh, board, any rec, I know that was a lot of information. Any recommendations or thoughts or, or presentations that you'd like to see us uh, do for, for you this year? You're here, so I've, so you got a nice little flavor. You hear from all of our schools and you'll hear about our academic achievement, our behavioral achievement, summer school, independent study, uh, universal TK, uh, our budget adoption process. And we also will be able to celebrate our employees through the annual increments as well as, uh, retirees. So just wanted to get the board's feedback on, uh, any other big topics that the board would like to hear about.
Dr. Mitchell, can you send that to us?
Absolutely. Maybe you want to look at it a little bit more and then get back to me. I'm, I'm happy if you want to look at it a little bit more detail and get back. But I've been, I've been, we've been itching to get back to a normal course where we want to feed the board the information that you need to know the health of our district. If our district is organism, there are health, there are key performance indicators that suggest the health of our district, and we want to be able to inform the board of all these different pieces, pieces of information that, that, that speaks to the health of our district. So happy to send this to you and get your feedback. So, so, uh, I do have a positive on Benz, La French, and trustees Turner on, uh, March fourth through the sixth, and then I'll, uh, check back. I'll circle back. Have Xenia circle back with, uh, trustee Ekis to see if those things work for you. And then we'll get down to the bit, uh, the next thing I'll do is work on securing CSBA to come in and present for us and then, uh, securing a, a site. And then we'll be a five, we'll be a five-member board again, and I think it'd be excellent work. Looking forward to it. And so, uh, board, those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any quick questions or shall, shall I go, go on to adjourn, adjournment? Adjournment, okay, sev- seventeen point zero, zero, zero one. Can I have mo- motion?
Ekis, I motion.
And I need a sec- second. And can I please have a vote? Trusty Ekis?
Aye.
Trusty La French?
La French, aye.
Trusty Turner?
Trusty Turner, aye.
Trusty Benz? Benz, aye, motion pa- passes for zero, zero. Thank you, thank you so much, all. Have a great night. I hope you get, get some rest. Please take oh, and the time is eleven, eleven oh eight. Everybody go home and go to bed.